Stephanie, we're good? All right. All right, well, let's call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order here at 10:01. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anyone from the public here for a comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? All right, I think everybody's here for stuff that's on the agenda. We'll move on any additions to the agenda from the Commissioners. No?
None at all.
All right, I think we might bring up Rockview and Quahanna again, but we could do that again toward the end, I think. If the meeting minutes are okay, we could take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held February 11th.
We have a second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes from the meeting held on February 11th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We have an exciting proclamation, proclamation number six, proclaiming February as Black History Month in Center County, and we have, I think it's five guests here to cover that for us. I don't know who goes first. Is that Leslie? All right.
She's the leader.
Come on up and join us or?
Come on up. Yeah, join us at the podium or join us here at the side, whatever is your preference.
Are you reading? The proclamation first?
We could, if you'd like. Want us to do it now or in the middle somewhere?
It would be great if you read it first, only because I have two graduate students joining us, and they're not here yet, but they're coming, they're parking.
Ah, okay.
Well, look at you. We can stall for a bit.
All right. Well, Steve, I see you have your readers on. Actually, no, we'll start with Amber and then Steve and then, okay.
All right, we'll share the paragraph.
We'll share. Just put a thumb where you stop.
Okay, so proclamation number six of 2025, whereas the United States government officially recognizes Black History Month as an annual celebration in February since 1976. Black History Month fosters awareness, education, and celebration of many achievements and vital contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the origin of Black History Month dates back to 1915, when Carter G. Woodson founded the organization known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, and whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the moral imperative for global dignity, to acknowledge the important contributions of African Americans in shaping our nation's history, and pays tribute to the generational struggle through systemic racism to create a more equitable future for Black people, and whereas...
I was gonna say, you can just read the whole thing. You were doing such a good job.
All right, so it's the bigger paragraph there or this one? Okay, so I think you start on the fourth whereas.
Okay, the fourth whereas.
And read as far as you'd like.
Whereas the national theme for 2025 is African Americans in labor, pivotal contributions to the workforce and across every industry, ensuring the development of the United States and central to our American history, and whereas 2025 marks the 100-year anniversary of the creation of Brotherhood of Sleeping Carporters and Maids by labor organizer and civil rights activist A. Philip Randolph, which was the first Black Union to receive a charter in the American Federation of Labor. Dr. Martin Luther King rallied citizens to pursue economic justice, established the Poor People's Campaign in 1967, and we continue to endeavor to strive toward equity across the labor industries. And whereas...
The big one?
Yep.
Okay. Whereas we recognize and commend the invaluable contributions of African Americans that have shaped our community of Center County. We honor local individuals, scholars, teachers, businesspeople, community leaders, and contributors who have enriched the quality of our lives and continue to move us forward toward freedom, fairness, justice, and equity. And whereas Center County endeavors working toward becoming an inclusive, welcoming, and engaging community where diversity is honored and celebrated throughout Pennsylvania. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Center County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in Center County and encourages all community members to continue to support, uphold, and celebrate the legacy of Black Americans, their power, perseverance, and exemplary achievements all year, and join us for the local celebrations across the Center Region adopted this 18th day of February 2025, signed by the county administrator John Fronick, and also signed by the Board of Commissioners Mark Higgins, Amber Concepcion, and Stephen G. Dershow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leslie Lang. I'm the Director for Adult Learner Programs and Services at Penn State. I am the past Forum on Black Affairs 2023 Humanitarian and the Chair of the Juneteenth Planning Committee for State College, and I have been a proud resident of Center County for 18 years. It gives me great pleasure to be with you again today and to thank you for acknowledging the longevity and the contributions and accomplishments of African Americans with the official proclamation. As you mentioned, the national theme is African Americans in labor. The National Association for the Advancement of Color People has been on the front lines since 1909 and probably the largest unpaid labor for its work. The NAACP celebrates 116 years this month, and so when we talk about the workforce and labor, where would we be without their faithful, effective advocacy of the NAACP? And they continue to fight to end racial inequality and discrimination and structural racism that you mentioned in our proclamation. They have been defending democracy and holding America to its ideals that it espouses, and this is all of our work. Black leaders and activists and organizers have formed the backbone of the U.S. labor movement from the enslaved workers in the 19th century in agriculture, industrial works, professional labor in the 20th and 21st centuries, and African Americans have always been a part of the American workforce. Racial injustice and economic justice are intrinsically intertwined. The Bureau of Labor Statistics indicates that African Americans make up more than 40% of the postal workers. You talked about trains and Pullman cars. Well, 36% is still in the inner cities, and they drive buses. 36% of us are in nursing. 30% of us are in the child, family, and school and social work fields, yet Black workers are still fighting for pay equity. In Center County, we have more than 158,000 residents that are Black or African American. Our population is less than 4%, and 78,000 of us are employed. The U.S. Census indicates 41% of our civilian workforce is in educational services, healthcare, and social assistance. In Center County, we acknowledge the top four employers are Penn State, the Mount Itony Medical Center, the state government, and our state college area school district, all of which are in jeopardy currently under the current White House orders. I ask you to still advocate for Black Americans who are facing problems relating to the number of jobs, the quality of jobs, and the types of jobs made available to all of us. I'd like to take a moment just to highlight additional local achievements. At Penn State in 1972, our fearless Thelma Price was the first Black woman to serve as the Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs, and she served the local NAACP as president in 1977. We know Grace Hampton is the first African American woman appointed to the university vice provost. We recognize that Cynthia Baldwin was a Penn State alum and the first African American to be elected to the bench in Allegheny County Court in 1989, and became the first African American woman to sit on the state of Pennsylvania's Supreme Court in January of 2006, and in 2010, she became general counsel at Penn State. Terrell Jones was named the vice provost for educational equity in 1998, and Guyon Blueford, a Penn State alum from 1964, served the United States Air Force and became a pilot and was the first African American to go to space in 1983. These are all very important, and I just reflect before I leave you with Mary McLeod Bethune, who was in 1904, with a dollar and 50 cents, had five young students who started the school for Black girls in Florida that became today's Bethune Cookman University. Bethune was appointed the Director for the African American Affairs by the President Roosevelt at the time and a Black cabinet member under the FDR's New Deal. All of these landmark decisions, and throughout her life, Mary McLeod Bethune broke through boundaries and used her platform to advocate for Black women and workers all around. And so I leave you with her words that say, "I leave you love, I leave you hope, I leave you the challenge of developing confidence in one another, I leave you a thirst for education, I leave you the respect for the use of power, I leave you faith, I leave you racial dignity, and I leave you with a desire to live harmoniously with your fellow man, I leave you finally with the responsibility to all of our young people." So I thank you that we believe that change continues with us, and I have brought two colleagues and I have brought two graduate students with me today, so thank you, and I call Carmen and Kestla.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. My name is Carmen Wong. I am a poet, I am a playwright, I'm an educator, and I'm also a dual-titled PhD student in English and African American and Diaspora Studies at Penn State University. I want to add to what Leslie has so beautifully and remarkably shared in this space, to think about the crucial history of Black History Month, which as we know has originated as Negro History Week. So for the past couple of years, I have stood before municipalities across Central County to support Black History Month proclamations, each time underscoring Dr. Carter G. Woodson's original vision for Negro History Week in 1926. Woodson created this week to fill in the absence of Black history in education, to instill racial pride within African Americans in a divided nation, and to highlight the contributions of African Americans that were otherwise erased from the historical narrative. So let's remember what Woodson was up against in the 1920s. This was a time when Jim Crow laws were entrenched, when segregation was not just practiced but legally enforced, literacy tests, poll taxes, racial segregation in schools and public spaces were legal and institutionalized, Black Americans were being pushed into lower-income jobs, and their businesses were often denied access to banks and credits. In the 1920s as well, the resurgence of the Ku Klux Klan also terrifying communities across the county, spreading violence and intimidation, and as historian Philip Jenkins notes in the journal, "Western Philadelphia," excuse me, "Western Pennsylvania History," quote, "By 1925, the Klan may have had upwards of quarter of a million members in Pennsylvania alone, making it one of the largest social movements in the state," end quote. So what does this have to do with us today? This is just the beginning of the story. Despite fierce opposition, Dr. Woodson pushed forward, not just to combat systemic racism, but to create a platform for Black voices, to demand an education free of white supremacist narratives, and to ensure Black historical figures were seen and heard. That was in 1926. Almost a century later, Dr. Woodson's fight is just as urgent. The very foundation of equity is under attack. Across the country, we're being flooded with false narratives about the impact of DEI and CRT rollbacks, attacks that disproportionately affect Black and marginalized communities. These rollbacks limit access to fair hiring, equal education, and workplace protections. Worse, they threaten Black businesses, reduce funding opportunities, and undermine the visibility and representation that Black communities have fought so hard for. At the same time, we see that the federal government is working to weaken or eliminate the Department of Education, arguing that education should not be handled at, that the education, excuse me, should be handled at the state level. So given Pennsylvania's aforementioned history, this makes the proclamation of Black History Month even more crucial. As we see state laws increasingly censor intellectual history and ban books, it's clear that these are not just policy shifts, they are deliberate efforts to erase the truth that define us. We are facing these attacks on all fronts. Dr. Woodson's visions for a week dedicated to the education, upliftment, and visibility of Black people must live on in defiance of those who seek to silence it. I leave with you this, Black History Month is not simply about remembrance, it is a call to action. We must protect the truths that have shaped our nation, no matter who tries to erase them. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kestla Elmore. I am a dual-titled PhD candidate in English and African American and Diaspora Studies at Penn State University. As we gather here today to commemorate and acknowledge the acknowledgement of Black History Month here in Center County, Pennsylvania, we as a community must understand the current socioeconomic and political crisis that we are living in and how it affects our current lives and the livelihood of our own children. With diversity and equity positions and programming being cut at alarming and dangerous rates nationwide and locally, from some of the country's largest businesses like Target, for example, it brings us back to this very room to remember what our place as community leaders here in our own city really entails. Here in Center County, we must continue to increase diverse community activities and encourage more Black and Brown voices and artists to be visible here in this very city. Our educators must be celebrated and must continue to push diverse books to be read and distributed to our young minds, because it is truly up to us. Community education and community outreach is crucial, especially right now, and Black voices and leadership should continue to be celebrated and honored. In this current moment, where these very voices and histories are being stripped at a national level, it's our job to increase visibility amongst ourselves and with each other. So I thank you for your time. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Gary Abdullah. I've been a resident in Central Pennsylvania for at least 50 years now, so...
Sorry, did you turn the microphone off?
Turn the mic off.
Ah, there you go. All right, here you go.
There we go.
Thanks, Seth.
And I want to start, along with the other people here this morning, I'm especially thrilled to receive this proclamation this year, because it does not come in a vacuum. As a couple of others have mentioned, the declarations out of Washington that are filled with very immediate threats and challenges for organizations that want to continue to support fairness, equity, and inclusion. So it's important that we acknowledge that landscape and honor your resolve in continuing this annual proclamation. You're standing by the same convictions that you declared last year, at a time when others, and I speak from personal experience, I've had conversations, others are hesitating and waiting for other shoes to drop, and it's very understandable. These are issues that are going to impact counties and townships in a lot of different places. So as I thank you for the sentiments of the proclamation, I think we all laud the quiet courage being shown and walked out. Please note that the last time I was here, I was mentioning initiatives that we were trying to put together to spotlight the multicultural aspects of the Center Region to encourage tourism and travel. That is still in progress. The important idea to leave right now is something that comes from Dr. King. The time is always right to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
My name is Terry Watson. I am a resident of Center County for the last past 17 years. I don't know if that's right, 17 years, that's scary. I'm a award-winning author. I am the Chair of the Community and Campus and Unity Group. I'm also the founder of Strategies for Justice, and I'm also the Vice Chair of the Center Region Human Relations Commission. So thank you for this time and also for this proclamation. I am not going to repeat what's been said by my dear sisters here and brother, but one thing I want to leave you all with is that the reminding of this theme of African Americans in labor is not just about recognizing the African Americans in the labor force, but also paying knowledge to the fact that we were always part of the labor force, both freed and enslaved, blue-collar and executive, skilled through trades and philosophical contributions, and of course, no matter what, we continue to fight to lay the foundation for the labor unions. I like to think of the idea that we always forget that Dr. King was in Memphis in 1968 to support nearly 1,300 African Americans and sanitation workers, who were on strike because of a low living wage and the right to have a union and dignity in the workplace. So I think about that because we need to recognize the importance of not just the African Americans in labor, but the contributions they had to have workplace dignity. So I implore that we continue to acknowledge their contributions year-round, as was mentioned in the proclamation, and I want to remind folks that we cannot discuss American history without discussing Black history, and we cannot discuss American contributions without acknowledging the contributions of the trailblazers from the Black community. I want to also, I feel encouraged though by the proclamation, because it should be reminding Center County to always include the stories of the American trailblazers like A. Philip Randolph, and Bayard Rustin, and Hattie Canty, and Chris Smalls, and of course, Mary McLeod Bethune, who their stories should always be in our literatures, our schools, our libraries, and any institution responsible for educating or representing the people. And I wanted to also leave you with a quote with Mary McLeod Bethune, and it reminds me of what my dear sister Carmen said, that it's a reminder that this is a call to action. So I want to call the action, was to enter to learn and depart to serve. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Terry. Any additional speakers, Leslie? No? All right, so we'll turn it over to Commissioner comments, and then we'll approve the proclamation. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, so I'd really like to thank all of you for your comments here today and for, you know, sharing with us this, you know, making note of the context in which we're passing this proclamation today, and the ongoing important and vital mission of celebrating Black history, celebrating the trailblazers in our own community and those nationally, so that all of our children and everyone in Center County, you know, understands the crucial role that the African American community has played, not only locally but nationally. I think there's, you know, really some really interesting local history as well of the Black community locally and the role of Center County during the time of the Civil War era, and that's, you know, history we want to make sure we are preserving and remembering as well. So, yeah, thanks. I think it takes a lot of courage to speak up on some of these matters in this time right now, so, but I'd like to thank all of you for your comments, and we'll continue, I think, you know, in this community to always continue celebrating all of our neighbors and the diversity that makes Center County such a great place to live, and looking forward to some of the celebrations that we'll have this summer, including Juneteenth, which, you know, should be a great event. It's been growing and been, you know, increasingly a really great event in our community. So I'd like to thank all of you for your leadership in these roles, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershow.
First of all, thanks for all coming out today. Charles, it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize your love for history and love for local history, and whether it's the Union Cemetery or many of the other things that you celebrate in our community, but your actions and your thoughts and your words have been an inspiration for a lot of people, and I just want to say thank you for that. I was reminded, as a kid growing up, you know, I grew up in Belfont, and Belfont has a rich heritage, and whether it's the editor of Billboard Magazine, who lives right, who grew up right across the street from our county courthouse, or the folks that fought and served and died in the Civil War, or the fact that the Mills Brothers have a rich history here, and, you know, whether it's the religious institutions in our community or the fact that we were very instrumental in the Underground Railroad system, and to remember those things and to pause for a moment and realize how important the rich heritage that our community serves and, you know, and still serving. And we are a welcoming county, and we want to continue that, and this is a reminder for us to keep that heritage alive, and we thank you for, again, coming out today and reminding us of the importance of all these actions that we take. Maybe, you know, we think maybe a little bit too routinely, you know, we have a proclamation for this or that, but they're important, and are important for not only the folks that are here to receive them, but for our community to remember, you know, why we're here and the importance of putting that structure all together, and Black History Month is just one small remembrance of the accomplishments of so many people in our area and our region and our nation, so thank you very much for, again, coming out today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well said, Commissioner Dershow. Yeah, there have been a lot of things going on in the past couple of weeks, the potential erasure of the Tuskegee Airmen for the, during the early training for Air Force, that's an absolute critical group during World War II in this country, and shameful that they have been trying to erase history. So as Commissioner Dershow mentioned, African Americans arrived in Center County not long after it was founded. We do not, I believe we don't know the exact date, do we, Steve?
No, I don't.
But it was pretty early, not too far after 1800, and by about the 1830s to 1840s, up to 15% of the workforce in the iron furnaces in Belfont were African Americans, whether formerly enslaved or free, and as both Commissioners mentioned, more than two dozen African American citizens volunteered to serve in the Union Army during the Civil War, and as I think Commissioner Dershow mentioned, there were a number of African American business owners and entrepreneurs who either started their businesses in Belfont or at least grew up here and then expanded their careers in other parts of the country. So it's a little bit odd that doing a proclamation for Black History Month is now considered a little out of the ordinary, but we are very happy to do this. We're very happy to support the thousands of African Americans who live in Center County and the many persons from other nationalities and backgrounds, because we are a welcoming, open community with one of the largest research universities on the planet here within our borders. So thank you so much again for coming, appreciate it, and we really hope to see you next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to say, though, I don't find it unord, I don't find this unordinary, if you will, that we're doing this, because we've done it for so long, and we celebrate it for so long, that I don't even think it's a question of whether or not we do it. It's remembering to add new features to it, you know, just like this, you know, this year, they talk about the labor movement.
Yes.
I'm a Labor Studies graduate from Penn State, and it's part of what we learned, and it's, you know, it's just what, to me, it's just, it's a very natural and simple thing, and I don't think it should be any more complicated than that, so just want to make sure that you know you're welcome and that this is not a burden for us to celebrate with you today, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll make a motion first, yeah. I will move to adopt proclamation six of 2025 proclaiming February 2025 as Black History Month in Center County.
We have a second then. We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number six of 2025 proclaiming February as Black History Month in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Everyone, come on up.
There you go. Now getting us all to fit, you know. That might be the challenge.
We can do it.
All right.
I shouldn't move anything.
Well, we usually set the people getting the proclamation.
Yeah, we'll be the bookends for like the...
Yeah, we're the bookends.
Charles.
They called me texting.
Right.
The roses. You guys all come in there.
It's great to have students coming.
Right, you got all the rotation there, so we'll get it in.
You've got to come closer, you're going to have to be there.
I think you want some.
Okay, I guess I need to...
Take it.
Yeah.
There you go. I'll make a better picture.
All right, everyone smile, three, two, one, three, two, one.
Two more cameras.
Man, there's cameras in the...
Put it in the book chat.
All right, smile, three, two, one. Smile. Three, two, one. All right. Smile. Three, two, one. All right. Smile. Three, two, one. All right. Smile. Three, two, one. All right.
I want to know, I want to know all there is to know about the Union Cemetery. I know you know that, so I would love to have that conversation. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. What a pleasure. Enjoy this beautiful day.
It's mostly sunny.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Now we're back to the contractual business of the county. For contractual authorizations, we have Jonathan with Capital Project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm asking for your consideration and approval of change orders for coordination requirements at the Community Services Building. The change orders are with GM McCrossan in the amount of $20,005, Holstrom Clark Electric in the amount of $1,047, and Ainsworth Incorporated in the amount of $24,730.57. These vary across the building in all levels and all areas. The majority are for ceiling height requirement changes due to ductwork clashes. So they had to lower the ceiling a few inches due to the ductwork being a little bit larger than anticipated.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for covering that, Jonathan, and we really appreciate the contractors, GM McCrossan here in Belfont, Holstrom Clark Electric, I think out of the Dubois area, and Ainsworth, which I think is over maybe a bit toward Harrisburg.
Correct.
Considering the size and scope of this project, remodeling a building that's pushing parts of it 100 years old, the number of change orders has been very reasonable.
Correct. They have been at a minimum.
Yeah. Commissioner Concepcion comments a question?
Yeah, sounds okay.
Commissioner Dershowitz? All right, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the change orders for the Community Services Building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change orders for the Community Services Building. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan.
Before you leave, Jonathan, how are we coming along over there? What's people asked?
All right.
The building is, we are almost on track.
We're roughly about a week behind right now. The contractors have jumped to various wings to try to stay out of each other's way. The second floor is the Farthest Along. The carpet is in roughly 50% of the carpeted areas. The only flooring that has not been installed is the luxury vinyl tile in the main walkways just to avoid any breakings and things like that. The windows are installed in the building with the exception of the atrium. The paint is also completed on the first and second floors and they are started to paint in the election space on the ground floor. Overall, we are pretty close to being right on track. Everything's coming along nicely. We have not ran into any major hiccups. Everything is going smooth.
I see the, I see they're working, putting the new windows in and they have lifts up to accomplish that. They've been working, they were out yesterday, so I figured.
Yeah.
They're a hardy bunch.
Yep, they are. They work through all weather. The only thing that did hold us up was a little bit of the wind stopped some lifts for lifting HVAC equipment, but that was only a two-day delay, so no issues there.
All right, thank you for the update.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan. Appreciate that. Now for our Emergency Management Agency there, Stoner.
I'm here.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to ask for your consideration to approve the fiscal year 2024 State Homeland Security Grant with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency and the other seven counties in the South Central Mountains Regional Task Force. The grant total is $409,295. It is funded as follows. Federal is $409,295 for a period of September 1, 2024 to August 31, 2027. This grant provides funding for training, equipment purchases, and administrative support for our regional task force.
Stoner, you mentioned it's for Center and seven other counties. I'm assuming since we're the largest county, they're having us handle the paperwork?
Well, I think, I think everybody has to adopt this to make it go through. Yes, yes. So the other seven counties are Bedford, Blair, Fulton, Huntington, Juniata, Mifflin, and Snyder County.
Great. Commissioner Concepcion comments your questions?
Sounds good.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. All right. I hope that federal funding keeps flowing.
So do we.
Yep. I will move to approve the grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Stoner.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then we've got Chris with an MOU for land development and are we gonna have a PowerPoint on this one?
We do.
Oh, okay.
Most importantly, it involves food.
I was gonna say.
Yes, it does.
Getting Chipotle nearby is exciting development.
Now we're talking.
Thank you and good morning. We have one memorandum of understanding that's being presented today and this is for the Chipotle restaurant and this is at the Shops at Paradise. Just a real quick reminder of what this particular MOU for short is, and it's a three-party agreement between the developer, the township, and the county, and it's whereby the developer agrees to reimburse the township's engineer for the reviewing, processing, inspecting of the plan. So the Board of Commissioners aren't approving the plan, they're just approving the contract for the township engineer to get reimbursed by the developer. Now on to the plan of the MOU that is being presented today. Again, this is the Chipotle restaurant and this is in the Shops at Paradise. And to give you a sense of where we're located, this is the Better Pike and as you head down or south, you're gonna make your way toward I-99 and toward the top of the screen, you're going toward Belfont. And this is the newly constructed giant grocery store with the, again, newly constructed McDonald's restaurant. And where the Chipotle is gonna go is gonna go across from the non-signalized intersection as you come in, right in, right out on the Better Pike. And the Chipotle restaurant is gonna be about 2,325 square feet. And a real quick reminder of the various phases that were part of the Better Pike shops. This is the grocery store. Phase one included the grocery store, a retail center, and then also a fast food restaurant with a fuel pump area. The McDonald's was phase five. Now we're coming in with phase four. And the plan that was prepared by Penn Terr Engineering, one of the plan sheets is up on the screen, and this is that non-signalized right in, right out entrance. And this is the 2,325 square foot Chipotle restaurant with the McDonald's across that intersection. And that's the plan or the MOU that's being presented today.
When's it gonna open?
Probably not soon enough, huh?
I'm just suggesting. Not soon enough. Yeah, that's gonna be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's really booming on Better Pike there.
Continued growth in Belfont, all the traffic on Better Pike. I think when they did some traffic studies recently, it was something like the third busiest road in the county, North Atherton being first. I'm trying to remember who was second.
Booming a Chipotle and it might.
It might even go higher.
When they did the initial development for the Shops at Paradise, they, the traffic engineers assumed full buildout. So they did assume the Chipotle within all those improvements, at least along the Better Pike. So they did account for at least this particular development in some of those traffic studies.
Are there gonna be enough parking there?
Yes, yeah, they have, they have provided more than enough parking per better township zoning.
Looks like they use some of the giant parking, I think.
There is shared parking.
I'm just suggesting, there's gonna be a lot of people.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Do we have questions from the press on this one?
Have there been any other further impact studies about the better township development in terms of Pendot or anybody else taking a look at the growth, what's going on there?
I believe there is some, like a working committee with the township and Pendot regarding the Better Pike.
It's starting to look like North Atherton, I'm just wondering, is there, take a look at impact studies?
Again, I think there is a working group with, that involves the township, township's traffic engineer and Pendot on the Better Pike.
Yeah, I know, Better Pike is something that the MPO is, keeps a regular kind of tabs on in terms of what the development is there and thinking about potential future projects. We have more subtle here from the MPO.
We have an expert.
Yes, we do. Yeah, just continued further growth in Belfont, continued development and as Steve was mentioning, it'd be nice to have a Mexican-style place in Belfont now. Lots of, lots of great restaurants and things to do in Belfont.
And potentially an employer we might want to reach out to in regard to our work release programs as well.
Yes.
Right across from the county jail.
Yeah.
Candy.
Very convenient. Any other questions from the press on this one? Unless there's anything else, we could take a motion.
I'll move to add the memorandum of understanding to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the memorandum of understanding to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Chris.
You're welcome. Thanks and have a great day.
Thank you.
Yes, and now we have Jim from Conservation District and it looks like you have a guest with you.
Yes, good morning. With me today is Joshua Yetter-Clark with Herbert Roland and Grubik, HRG. The team there led by Josh serves as Center County's Countywide Action Plan Coordinator. And the reason we're here this morning is we're seeking approval of a landowner agreement between the Conservation District and Center County Government. This is to facilitate the Conservation District funding a lawn or landscape conversion project here at Willabang under our Countywide Action Plan Grant. This project proposes to convert 0.2 acres of existing turf into native meadows, shrubs, and trees. The project will be located at the front of the Willabang complex, basically between the middle and lower parking lots and another portion in front of the Records Management Building. Let's see. The HRG as our cap coordinator will be responsible for bidding the project and also overseeing construction. The project total is not to exceed $35,000 and that will be covered in its entirety through our Countywide Action Plan Grant.
Great, thanks for covering that, Jim. Is Joshua anything you wanted to add?
Nope, I have a plan set if you folks would like to look at it, but.
Oh, great.
This is going to essentially eliminate a lot of the turf issues along that bank and the front.
Correct.
Very dangerous area to mow.
Yes, and this project, we're excited about it. It will have environmental benefits. We'll be removing lawn and planting native plants that will, you know, improve wildlife and pollinators, but there also are practical and safety improvements that will come as a result of that.
Yeah, that was my question. Would, a lot of flowers for the pollinators?
Yes.
So the interior pieces of the will be meadows.
How much, Jim, how much, how much maintenance will this be ultimately?
There will be some maintenance, particularly early on when it's being established, but we anticipate that the maintenance load will actually be less over time. You know, with the lawn, you have weekly mowings. With these plants, we expect less. There'll be some maintenance required several times a year, but, but much less than is needed currently.
And is there, is there consideration that the rest of this will be possibly considered in the future or is it just gonna be this section?
That, go ahead, Joshua.
Yeah, I think there's been discussion about a new sign in this area, so once that's finalized, we can continue.
All right. All right, so it's the area between the upper and middle parking lots and then the downhill side, actually no, the middle and lower parking lots, middle and lower parking lots and then downhill side of Records.
Yeah. Well, that's a rough area to maintain.
Yeah, very steep, yes.
That'll be, that'll be exceptional. Should be very beautiful. At least a few, a few months out of the year, that'll.
Yes.
The idea of the hydrangeas.
Oh, yeah, all those are pretty.
Mm-hmm. That's why it's in the stepers. That'll probably make it a little easier to navigate.
So access to getting there and keeping.
Right, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm sure, you know, everyone working in this building will appreciate that, having that space then.
Wait, Amber, you wanna grab the other innocent thing? If the press wanted to get a shot of, of the plans. There we go. So the folks at home can see it. All right. Put that back down.
Maybe we could, we'll see the master yard.
Yes, that's true. Right up their alley. Any questions from the press on this project? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Unless there's anything else, I think we just need to approve the grantee agreement.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the landowner grantee agreement for Conservation District.
We have a motion and a second to approve the landowner grantee agreement for the Conservation District. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, thanks, Jim and Joshua. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing that completed. Moving on to Human Services, we have Faith with Adult Services.
Good morning. I have one new contract for you today. This is a request for $5,046.01 for Housing Transitions Emergency Shelter Services. We have some additional funding in the block rent this year because we received an increased allocation in our HAP or our Homeless Assistance Program monies. And really, this is just to kind of move some dollars around between our ESG, Emergency Shelter Program, and use HAP dollars to just meet existing costs. So it's not necessarily adding anything new, but it's covering some costs that we've had in emergency shelter just with the increases that we've had in the community as well. That's it.
Thanks, Faith. And good to see we're working on this in a day when it started out at 10 degrees.
Yeah.
Commissioner Concepcion, anything on this one?
No, I'm glad you're working on this.
Yep.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Recently, I think they just did a homeless survey here.
Our point-in-time survey?
Yeah.
What was the outcome?
Sure. Yep. So what we submit to HUD is just sheltered homeless and unsheltered homeless. So Adult Services is in charge of facilitating the unsheltered homeless portion. This year, we found two people in the middle of the night because it's the second year that we've done like an evening team versus just going out and canvassing during the day. The year prior, we found about 14 to 20. And the reason that we saw such a change was because it was incredibly cold. But what's really important to note is that out of the cold, opened up their Code Blue Shelter and there were 15 people in there that were interviewed and otherwise would have been on the street or in their car. So they are considered sheltered. We had over 200 sheltered homeless, I think it was 220. We had about 50 people on our waitlist for housing services, so you have to be literally homeless or chronically homeless to even make it to that list. And then we found two people. In addition, we also tried to capture as much data as possible on leads, people that are experiencing housing instability issues. And I think that we've reached out to about 170 businesses and organizations throughout that day to do outreach. You're welcome.
Thanks. So numbers appear to be relatively stable, but still 220 homeless people in Center County is, it's a fair number.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somewhat shows the impact of the affordable housing crisis. Great, thanks. Any questions on that? No? All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll move to add the contract with Housing Transitions to next week's consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Housing Transitions to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Faith.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
I think I see Dave out of the car. My, there he is, for transportation.
Good morning. Thank you. I comment ask for consideration of approval of an addendum number one with All-Pro Fleet Services LLC, previously Extreme Towing LLC, to provide, to continue to provide vehicle maintenance for our business and para- transit fleets.
week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you very much, Faith.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I think I see Dave out of the corner of my eye. There he is for transportation.
Good morning. Thank you. I, I come and ask for consideration of approval of an addendum, number one, with All Pro Fleet Services LLC, previously Extreme Towing LLC, to provide, to continue to provide vehicle maintenance for our business and paratransit fleets. The contract rates for the fleets are unchanged from the beginning, which was established in 2022, and they're not asking for any changes in the rates. Just getting the official agreement continued to carry us out through July of this year. Then we'll come back and ask for another extension. We have two years remaining on the original contract. And speaking with Shane, the owner of All Pro Fleet Services, he's very happy with everything as it is and sees no need to change anything. So that's a good thing. Actually, just spoke with him yesterday afternoon, and we talked about that. So he's appreciative to the work, and I can say that they do a tremendous job to help serve us and our needs.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've heard, Dave. You and your team are very happy with All Pro Fleet.
Yes, yes.
And that the prices are quite reasonable.
Yes, they are. And like I said, they, they, they jump through hoops for us when needed. I mean, they, they've rescued stranded drivers and just done everything possible to make sure our service continues to function as needed. Yes.
What's our fleet up to now? 22, 24?
Our total fleet?
Yeah.
132 vehicles.
Right, but buses.
Oh, we have 32 in there, I think.
Oh, wow. Okay, even more than I remember.
Probably 25 of them are the buses.
The buses, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're expecting a couple new ones soon, which we're patiently waiting for. We, we need them. So, yeah.
Very good. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
This is good. Saying that rates would be unchanged from August to July. That's great.
Right, right. And, and hopefully, unless something bad happens in the next several months, he has no intentions of seeking anything additional. He already told me that. So when we come back again for another extension, hopefully the same. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Durson?
We had a great relationship with Extreme Towing.
Yes.
I can look forward to continue.
Yeah, that was a smooth transition that happened. And like I said, we're, we're very pleased with the service that they provide for Center County. Yes.
Great.
Great. All right. Then I'll move to approve the addendum number one with All Pro Fleet Services LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve addendum number one with All Pro Fleet Services LLC. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I'm on the smaller side.
Okay. I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. Now talking about the transportation and the Center County Municipal Planning Organization, we have Marcella here to talk about a letter of support.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. So the Center County MPO is seeking federal discretionary funding under the Promoting Resilient Operations for Transformative, Efficient, and Cost-Saving Transportation, also known as PROTECT, to meet the February 24th, 2025 deadline. The grant application is requesting funding to develop a, a countywide resilience improvement plan to evaluate and address the vulnerabilities of the county's multimodal transportation network to become more resilient to flooding, natural disasters, and extreme weather events. The resilience improvement plan will assist the CCMPO in seeking measures to reduce the damage and disruption of its highway transportation system, improve the safety of the traveling public, and address the needs of disadvantaged communities that are most vulnerable to our hazards. We are proposing a three-phase development of this plan that includes initial data gathering, conceptual engineering such as pre-design and design, and implementation and permitting. We think that this approach will allow us to develop a plan that would assist our municipalities moving toward construction projects. So what we don't want to do is create a plan and put it on the shelf and never look at it again. So this effort also assists with the implementation of Center County's Hazard Mitigation Plan, specifically the action to coordinate the performance of detailed flood studies for the county's high hazard areas to determine a full range of flood reoccurrence intervals for use in future vulnerability analysis. So we have worked with the county planning department to, I guess, I don't want to say assign, but we've worked with them to make sure that this could be covered under our flood, our resilience improvement plan. And we're happy to make sure that this would actually implement something in the hazard mitigation plan. And part of the, the, the program actually asks you to reference your hazard mitigation plan as well. So it just meshes really well together. So I'm here today to ask for a letter of support for the grant application. A lot of, some of the areas that we will be working in include Phillipsburg, but not all, not just Phillipsburg, but Chester Hill Borough and Decatur Township over in Clearfield County. So having relationships across the way between Center County and then Clearfield County will show partnership and collaboration, which is one of the criteria in the application. So any letters of support between those municipalities, between the two counties, would be really helpful. So that's what I have for you.
Great. Thanks, Marcel. Especially timely. Right now, I've been reading that for a while, much of the state of Kentucky was underwater.
Yes. Yes. This is a pattern that continues across the country.
Commissioner Concepcion, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just I know that there's been identification that we know there's a number of areas in the county that have recurring flooding on roadways that are heavily used. And it's just, it's a safety issue for our residents and an issue in terms of the long-term maintenance of those roads as well. This is a good, good thing to do.
Commissioner Durson?
Well, no, thank you. This is, this is fantastic. But I think also you might want to note in there that we have a pretty strong relationship with, with Clearfield County in regard to mosquito control.
Oh, okay.
And that might be worthy of, of discussion because that area is largely very swampy.
Yes.
And that's part of the, part of the ongoing.
Right.
Conversation we have every year with our planning department to make sure that we have that strong relationship between Clearfield and Center.
Thank you for noting that. I will definitely include that.
And also, while, while we have you here, what's going on in the, in the MPO world? I mean, what other?
Little broad, Steve.
You know, I mean, you know, people hear MPO and, you know, I know, I know we just had a little briefing a little while ago that was quite interesting. Highlight any of those. One, one item would be perfect.
Yes.
Well, I can speak to the Benner Pike just a little bit, maybe for the press's benefit. So through our Unified Planning Work Program, which is a two-year program that basically just details what our MPO staff are working on for two years, we've requested supplemental funding for a Benner Pike corridor study. Not really sure when we'll hear about that, but we're hoping that that study will help us to move forward in fixing some of those issues in the corridor and allowing the economic development to continue to happen, but in a safe manner for our, our travelers and our pedestrians. The other thing is we're still working on our long-range transportation plan, which is our 30-year plan that is required by the federal government that basically details goals, what we're working on, and then talks about the different plans that we would like to move forward. So plans meaning projects, studies, those kinds of things. So we are wrapping that up. Well, we're wrapping up our, our stakeholder meetings and our municipal meetings. I think the first week of March is our last meeting, and then we will start pulling the plan together for adoption in September.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Marcel. Any questions from the press? No? All right.
All right. I will move to approve the letter of support for the PROTECT program grant application.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support for the PROTECT program grant application. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Marcel.
Thank you very much.
Move over to the check run.
So the check that I'll recognize today is for the Center County Public Safety Training Center. We're doing some significant repairs on the burn building there so that it can continue to be useful for those controlled burns that we, we do there for training purposes. With that, I would move that we approve the check run dated February 14th, 2025.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated February 14th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. All right. Do we have an administrator's report, John? No? All right. Moving on to reports and announcements. Amber, do we have a voter's registration?
So actually, we have no change in the total from last week's report. We have 101,747 total voters on our report, 41,311 Democratic voters, 162 Green Party, 562 Libertarian, 15,524 with no affiliation, and 42,147 with Republican registrations. All of the minor parties come up to 2,041 for that total of 101,747. Our precinct of the week is Precinct 87, Spring Southwest. They have 1,386 registered voters in Spring Southwest, and at the last election, they had a voter turnout percentage of 82.25%. They do vote at our Center County Public Safety Training Center at 391 North Harrison Road in Pleasant Gap. So that's our voter report.
So no change in the numbers.
I don't know if there was a change in the internal numbers, but there was no change in the total.
Yeah. Couple people went off, exact same number went on. All right.
It is very rare.
Yeah. 101,000. All right. Great. Thanks, Amber. Any executive sessions to report or hold, John?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right. Moving on to the remainder of our public meeting schedule. This Thursday, the 20th, we have a combined salary board and Board of Commissioners meeting at 10. Next week, Tuesday, Board of Commissioners at 10. And next week, Thursday, the 27th, Finance Committee at 9:00, and a Board of Commissions, sorry, Board of Elections meeting at 2:00. Did want to mention before we take questions from the press, perhaps the commissioner should talk about maybe writing a letter to the Department of Corrections, ask them to reconsider their proposal to close Rockview and Queen Anna. Chat with staff about that.
That's, that's one element.
Yes.
I think another element would be this, this move going to impact a lot of our citizenry, a lot of our businesses, vendors of the institution. I think we really need to get a unified voice out there and make sure that our legislators and the governor's office understand that the impact it will have on our citizens. That would be a good starting salvo, but I really think it's important that we, that we impress them to have a full understanding of what it is that the impacts will be received by our community. It's going to be massive.
Yeah. Yeah. Largest closing in the county since the Corning Asahi Plant was closed. Somebody was mentioning it was about 20 years ago, give or take.
And I think another piece of the conversation is what does it look like after we have this, if they would have this closure? What's, what's, what's the next move? And I think there's, as I perceived last week, I think there's a lot more questions that we need to ask. You don't just poof, take these jobs away and there's no other impacts.
No.
And what are you going to do with the facility? What's the, what's the long-range plan? I think we need to have a lot of conversation. And I, and I think it's only fair that, you know, if you're going to announce something of this magnitude, that we have those answers.
Yeah. I think it's pretty crucial that, you know, as they're doing this planning, that they understand the impact on this community. And, you know, I think asking them to reconsider is, is a reasonable thing to do and making sure that, that, you know, we're expecting there to be significant data collection to understand the impact of this in our community because it's, it's a, you know, it's a very large employer, but it also, you know, these are jobs that are family-sustaining jobs. So it's, it's really a concerning situation for many people in our community.
Yeah, I just looked up our most recent unemployment statistics for Center County, and we had about 2,100 people who meet the definition of being unemployed, which is historically a pretty low number for Center County. But obviously, we're looking at, I think it's 897 jobs in total between the two facilities and, as both the other commissioners have mentioned, between various suppliers to the facility, the fact that these are good-paying jobs with benefits. It's more than 897 jobs affecting Center County, Clearfield County, and surrounding counties. So we'll, we'll start the work with county staff to come up with a letter requesting the Department of Corrections reconsider their announcement.
And I think also if they are going to go forward with it, including us in the planning for what happens with the facility and grounds.
Yes. Questions from the press today?
Sounds like your possible letter would focus on possible economic impact. Do you talk to the prison society and others who have raised other issues about what happens if we keep that prison open?
They have chatted with us. Also, something perhaps people don't realize is many of the inmates at Rockview have been sentenced to relatively long terms. And once you're settled into a correctional facility, that tends to be where you stay for pretty much all of your sentence. So there's going to be a lot of disruption to those returning citizens because if you're sentenced to multiple years, you're going to be, we're planning on serving them out there at Rockview. And now those groups will be split up. They'll be all over the state. They'll be starting over in all sorts of new facilities.
With space available at the county prison, has the county heard any type of requests? Conversation with federal authorities, ICE, Immigration, Homeland Security about possibly using space at the county prison in the future if needed by any of those agencies?
To my knowledge, we have not, no. Nor, nor are we seeking that out. The federal prisoners are a very mixed group.
Would the county be obligated if you contacted, or can you tell the feds we're not doing that?
We'd have to check with our solicitor on that, see what the rules are.
I think the big question was whether or not we could handle the capacity, which I'm not sure at this point, that, you know, depending on what kind of numbers they would even entertain, that we would be capable of. We have probably one of the more historic load numbers.
Yes.
And we've got pods closed. So really, it's, at this point, I'm not sure how practical it would be for us.
And I think we've been fully staffed for maybe a total of four weeks since COVID hit. So we're, we're still running short-staffed at the facility.
Some counties have already stated publicly, there may be projections they would not, the prison wasn't open for that.
One, or Close County has a, has a contract placed.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Great questions. Yes.
Going back to the emergency, kind of how critical is it to secure federal funding for training and everything else going on with this group?
Right. So it's very critical. In Center County, and I believe pretty much every county that surrounds us several deep, there are no professional emergency responders. Everyone is a volunteer besides county staff and I think maybe two people with the Alpha Fire Company. So training is crucial. We have, in this geography, thousands of emergency responders in the eight counties. And they need to keep their certifications up. They need to keep their training up. They need to practice because you can't say, oh, emergency, pause here for a couple of weeks while we get all up to date and make sure we know what we're doing. No, there, there will be no warning, like we had happen in October 22nd of 2016, seven, eight inches of rain on top of a mountainside. And suddenly, before you know it, you're evacuating people out of second-floor windows in Milesburg. No time, no ability to pause the emergency. We've got to do the training now, so we're ready in the future. Great. Thanks.
Is there any guarantee of federal funding that has already been approved for projects that it's locked in for a year or so, or could in theory be cut off tomorrow?
We don't know. That's the short answer. We do not know.
Okay.
Any additional? Good. All right. Looks like we take a motion to adjourn then.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 11:08. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.